The co-chair of, I'll let you take it away.
I was like heavier than they're gonna be.
Well, thanks, Seth. As the mayor was saying, we've been hard at work in the past two or three years on this Heartland 2050 vision. So I'm gonna begin with our video. You might have to crank your head inside a little bit, but we'll start with this and then I'll have one presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
The Heartland 2050 vision is to shape and develop the kind of region we will want to call home in 40 years. Countless amounts of data have been collected and analyzed through this process in order to create the Heartland 2050 vision. This includes talking with 4,000 people across the metro, from community leaders to business professionals, as well as everyday citizens.
So Heartland 2050, if that regional vision project cuts our entire metro area, so that's the Haight County region, both Iowa, Nebraska, that's where we're gonna build a longer vision for how we grow in the future. We anticipate we could add nearly half a million people by 2050. So where are those people going to live? Where are they going to work? How are they going to get around? How are they going to plan some of the infrastructure that's needed to support all that room efficiently?
In November of 2011, the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency was awarded a grant to develop a regional vision for our metro, and Heartland 2050 was born. Their first objective was to bring a wide variety of citizens together from all over the region, rural, urban, and suburban. To do that, dozens of community meetings, forums, and workshops were organized to give citizens an opportunity to voice their priorities, values, and ideas.
Took them 45 minutes to get that?
The workshops that we were involved with wanted to make sure that the community understood the reason why we wanted to get their input. And so we had to let them know what this Heartland 2050 really is. This was what it was more holistic. It was gonna touch on transportation, housing, employment, energy. And so we really wanted to make sure that they understood not only this focus, but how this goes into your view in your community, but then how is that going to impact maybe your children and your grandchildren.
And out of that process now has come this really clear vision for 21. Because it has some science behind it, it's really pragmatic vision of the future.
Today, Heartland 2050 is putting forth a roadmap with incremental steps to grow the region responsibly and improve the quality of life for all residents by the year 2050. Together, our region will strengthen its robust economy to encourage business expansion, job training growth, and become a national magnet for a young and highly skilled workforce.
Together, our region will have the highest quality of education system that educates the workforce of the future.
Together, our region can be noted for its healthy living, safe neighborhoods, and exceptional healthcare providers.
Together, our region will be known for welcoming, protecting, and lighting communities that offer residents a range of housing choices and location.
Together, our region's investment will develop efficient infrastructure that supports economic development, provides for transportation choices, and reduces intermodal costs.
Together, our region values protects and utilizes our natural future and systems to provide access to green space and resilience from natural disasters.
The ultimate result of the Heartland 2050 project is that we help communities develop like their citizens want.
What's different about this effort is that it's a lot of stakeholders coming together and holding hands across the river and across county lines to say, let's help each other be successful.
If our corporations, our businesses, our communities are not reflective of what our region's watching look like, it's gonna miss me a whole.
Talked about downtown Omaha and the redevelopment that's happened along the river. That planning and how we've got to redevelop that started back in the 1960s. So we're gonna have to be proactive, we're gonna have to be aggressive, we're gonna have to work together.
This vision is only the first step. Together, we can implement these changes to realize the better tomorrow. Go to heartland2050.org to learn how you can take the first steps to growing responsibly together.
Okay, so thank you for having me here. I'm Greg Yule, the executive director with MAPPA, the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency. In your packets, you have the full vision document. There's also a brochure that has a map and then some other documents. I'm gonna quickly walk you through here. On about the second page right here lists the acknowledgements. And so I've mentioned the co-chairs from the steering committee. On the Iowa side, we had former mayor Tom Hanifin as our co-chair. And then on the Nebraska side, we had Dana Bradford from the Nebraska side, also private sector representative with the weight company. And you can see the list. Many folks from Potawatomi County, from Council Bluffs, were involved with this project. And we really put forth a lot of effort to make sure it was truly regional as we went forward. You also have a support letter from Heartland, from Tom Hanifin, supervisor Tom Hanifin now, in your packet as well. If you turn to page 13 in that vision document, we have an overview of the public outreach activities that were undertaken as a part of this. And it says, throughout the 15 months of outreach that we did, we met with 175 community groups, hosted 25 visioning workshops, 10 values forums, 19 open houses. We attended six county fairs, 11 farmers' markets, and engaged and listened to nearly 4,000 people. In addition to that, we worked with two firms to conduct professional telephone surveys that were statistically valid, to make sure that all of the input that we were getting is representative of the public as a whole and not just skewed. It's something that we're always working on in planning and in public outreach activities. You can see the next couple pages there overview, provide an overview of the response that we got. We heard the people in this metro area in general are very positive about the quality of life that they enjoy here, about the future. It's really off the charts relative to most of the other metro areas that this type of survey has been done in. In fact, the researcher told us the only other metro area where he'd seen levels come in this high was San Diego. So you can tell people that you live in an area just as good as San Diego as we can experience today outside. In addition to that, we have the challenges. There were concerns, of course, about safety and crime, taxes. And then the third highest one, we're actually retaining well-educated, well-trained young adults. So making sure our children and grandchildren have the opportunities to stay here. So that was a big emphasis of the plan. As you look at the strategies for growth on pages 16 and 17, being a big planning study, we did some research about that and found that there's a lot of interest in growing in the existing areas. I think it kind of ties back to that Midwestern sensibility of take care of what you got and let's try and redevelop where we are, in addition to having some additional suburban development as we've had the past 40 years. The goals, as was highlighted in the video, have the six different goal areas. So those are the big picture goal areas of where we would be working as a community and as the Heartland 2050 project. So really, this is intended to provide a high-level goal. When we come together as a metropolitan area, City of Council Bluffs, City of Omaha, Mills County, and others, that can kind of be our guiding light there to help us as we work into the future and make sure we're staying on track. And those goals are listed on page 27 and following in the vision document. You also have in there the vision scenario itself that was mentioned, and that is on page 41. And so this was the result of a lot of the workshops we had. We got a lot of great ideas from the public and how they want to grow into the future. And so there's a lot of additional development that we see in Council Bluffs. One of the things that we heard from the project team again and again was that Council Bluffs had a lot of opportunities to kind of be a sort of almost an off-Broadway. Obviously, Omaha is the heart of the region economically, but that there's so much opportunity here, both for continued growth outward and redevelopment here within the core. And if you look at that vision scenario, that is offered as an alternative to the way that the area has grown as a whole the past 30 to 40 years. So for instance, if you look on page 43, there's a lot of metrics that compare this vision scenario that was developed versus the trend scenario, just how we've done the past 30, 40 years. And that bottom right corner there lists the efficient use of public funds. So if we follow the vision scenario, we anticipate by 2050, we will have over $23 billion of public funds that will be necessary to fund all of the infrastructure, all of the water and sewer, roadways, parks, and other things that go into new development. However, if we follow just the current trend scenario, you're getting close to $28 billion. So that's a $4.5 to $5 billion in savings by following the vision scenario, by working together and making sure that the new development is well-planned and done in a way that makes sense. Part of this is because if you look back on page 42, there's a chart down there at the bottom that says balanced housing. And we had housing experts, economists that were a part of this team that worked on this project. And they pointed out that with the demographic shifts, with an aging population, a lot of empty nesters, and in the younger generation that has shown a lot of interest in living in more urban areas, more dense areas, that there's a lot of opportunities to do not only condos and redevelopment in urban areas, but also some smaller lot residential. So that all together helps you to save a lot of money as a community as you go into the future. You have in your packet the action plan, and this is what the committees worked on. It lists a lot of different strategies. It is a working draft. It's not intended that everything in here is necessarily going to be done. This is sort of a menu of ideas for future collaboration and some opportunities. So if you talk about specific strategies and what would an example of a project that might become out of this, one of the things we talk about is identifying tools, models, best practices. So if we talk a lot about infill and redevelopment, well, how are you going to do that? What are some best practices out there that we could do that could actually be held out as a model for communities throughout the eight-county region? Obviously, I think that Heartland 2050 offers you the opportunity to continue to coordinate with your neighbors. And not that we don't work together and don't coordinate. We at MAPPA, that's sort of our reason for being is coordination. So we know it does happen. But we think a project like this really steps it up and makes it that much more important. We have stakeholders coming together to work on that purpose. I think it makes it that much easier to do. We have obviously a lot of different disciplines and topic areas represented that we will like to be a part of this project. And then we want to be more proactive, more aggressive in going out and getting grants and trying to move forward with the plans that we have. I did include in your packet a handout. It just says, is Heartland 2050 part of the UN Agenda 21? The answer is no. I listed four concerns there. Some members of the public have tried to connect this with the United Nations Agenda 21. And this is really a local project. This is the result of local participation and stakeholders and the ideas that came through those surveys, through those workshops. You know, and so I have a number of areas here. I list a quote of some of the things that people have tried to connect this. Because it was funded through a grant that was funded by HUD, and that's called the Sustainable Communities Grant. So some people have said that, well, because of some of the buzzwords in that, they've tried to say it's part of the Agenda 21. So I have some quotes here for you of what the assertions are. Regionalism, and we would say that's not us trying to take over anything. If there's any project that's going to come out of Heartland 2050, it has to come back to the City of Council Bluffs for your approval. There's no way, shape, or form is this an attempt to remove any local land use authority or jurisdiction. Forcing people into mass transit, the vision scenario that I talked about has well over 90% of the trips still being by automobile. And so we fully recognize that the car is going to continue to be the predominant mode of transportation so far as we can tell in the metro area. But it does talk about providing additional choices and some additional options in transit, which is something that we heard at least certain portions of the community have a lot of interest in. And then environmental sustainability. Is this an extreme environmentalist agenda? Again, the answer is no. This is all about population growth and how can we grow our area. So I'd be happy to answer if there's any more questions on that. As far as our next steps, you have in your packets the executive committee applications. We're inviting members of the public, members from the public and private sector, to respond and let us know if they'd like to serve on the executive committee or any of the working groups. This is open till the end of April. And on the flip side, you have the chart that shows the anticipated working areas. And you know, I will reserve the right, this may evolve. We may decide that some of these aren't necessary or need to be merged. But this is kind of the thought we have going into it. We'd like to have the first summit. We'd like to have semi-annual summits where we come together, bring stakeholders together, talk about how we're doing and progress towards all these goals. And the first one we're looking at having in July. And then I believe for your consideration today, you have a Heartland Regional Compact. And this is a statement of support that the City of Council Bluffs supports these goals that Heartland 2050 has outlined, and that they would agree that participating in terms of staff time and that sort of thing is okay. There's not a funding requirement. That's part of it. It's an optional thing. But we would say if you do support Heartland 2050, this is over and above what MAPPA typically does. So if you really believe in this, think this is worthwhile, we would be coming back with a funding request for the City of Council Bluffs for FY 2016. As far as MAPPA's role, we would commit to be the staff for this, to help provide the organizational support, to send out the agendas, to convene the meetings, to set up those semi-annual summits, and then also to help work with some of the metrics and tracking the data and see how we're doing towards the goals. So our board has supported this project and said, let's continue it, and MAPPA will help staff it. But really, it would be up to all the stakeholders to drive the project forward. So I know it's a lot of information, but I wanted to give you an overview. It's been a big project and I hope you will support it and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes.
After you.
I just have a quick one. How does the Heartland 2050, how does MAPPA's involvement with that differ from the role you've played in the past working with the local communities?
I would think it ties to this action plan. So you know, MAPPA's role, we will assist communities with grant writing, grant assistance, obviously our transportation function. We are the MPO for the area. So we will continue to do that. But this would involve specific committees really working on this action plan or other items that come up in the future. And it's just, as the video says, a little more holistic and bringing a lot more private sector involvement as part of this.
I was going to ask, is this vision document identical to what's posted online? I found that over the weekend. I did some research after I looked at what appeared in our packet, and I found the vision online. And it appears that there may be, you know, some things that are posted online that don't appear in what you gave us here today.
Okay. As far as I'm aware, it's the same. So I mean, obviously, when you work on a plan, there's different iterations going out. So if you let me know what the discrepancies you found, I'd be happy to check into that and see what's going on. But as far as I know, that's the final.
That might help shorten my homework on this a little bit. Might you be available to come back and talk to us on the 23rd about that vision document?
Yeah.
What I was gonna propose is if we could postpone the action on the resolution till the 23rd so that we have an opportunity to review the vision document. There's a lot of policy statements I think that would be helpful for us to have an opportunity to review prior to voting on the compact. I also have some legal questions. I don't mean to keep you up there as well. But Dick, a couple of things caught my attention. He alluded to the financial commitments and the document calls for various types of contributions in the establishment of budgets later on to carry out this function. And that's not really set out in the compact itself. And I'm wondering to what extent this creates an obligation. Secondly, this strikes me as an intergovernmental agreement. When we do these within the state of Iowa, we have to have a Chapter 28E-type agreement in order to cooperate with other government entities. And I would like to have some sort of legal opinion from you as to whether or not that requirement would exist for this particular agreement.
Just briefly, the 28E, that is a one method that cities can contract with one another to coordinate their efforts. But it's not the only way. It's not exclusive.
Okay.
But we can address that.
Because of course, we are entering into an agreement with jurisdictions that have different state laws than we do. My third thing that caught my attention was that the compact doesn't appear to have a termination clause to it. So this appears to be kind of an open-ended thing. So with respect to those three items, I would really appreciate some research on that if that's acceptable to the rest of the council.
Greg, can you address any of those questions?
Sure, Mayor. I would, in the, I think if you have the compact in front of you, the final sentence that says, "We pledge to continue to work together in good faith with the region toward implementation of the vision, and will provide support through participation of staff members, elected officials, and financial support, subject to final review and approval by each jurisdiction organization." Really, this is kind of an attaboy, a statement of support. It's, you know, any financial support does have to come back for the review and approval of the council. If there were concerns that Heartland 2050 was going off the rails, you could always take action and
Not fund.
You had to not fund it, not, you know, decommit yourselves. This is really just, you know, I don't want to make it out to be a bigger deal than it is. We thought it'd be a good idea to have a compact, to kind of take this seriously, say, yeah, this, we want to move into the next phase. But there's really nothing binding or obligatory about it.
Dick, is this more akin to a statement of intent of that we are interested and supportive of this joint venture with other entities? Or does it bind us specifically to any of the possibilities that are mentioned in the documents we received today?
I would say this is more of an intent. You know, if I were gonna classify documents, I'd have this document, then you'd have an MOU, and then you'd have an actual agreement at some point in the future. This doesn't really have any details in it that could expose the city to future liability. I mean, it's just an intent to act together in the future. If for some reason we do not go along with a proposal, I think it favors one jurisdiction over another in the future, we would not have to participate with it.
Thank you.
It's a pledge of support, you know.
Yeah, so that was kind of my impression, that it was just a general, yeah, we support this idea. And then just for clarification, for my own clarification, the only question I had is, so, but I think it's already been answered. The 7,500 that it mentioned, we're not actually allocating that tonight. This is just a general, yeah, it's a good idea, we support it, kind of thing. Am I correct on that? Thank you.
Coming back to what I was asking about earlier, when I was doing my quick study on this over the internet, I found the first steps portion, the action plan, and it says, by signing onto the compact, there is a commitment to assigned staff and elected officials to various committees. And again, you know, I don't see a big problem here. It's just that this document makes a number of recommendations how we head as a council and a city on certain policy issues going forth into the future. And I just simply like some time to study this vision document in more detail, given that we were just handed this document just a few moments ago. So unless there's a real downside to postponing the resolution, I would propose that we do that.
I don't know, Marcy. I think I gave every council member a copy of this two months ago, probably.
The vision document?
I don't need any more time with that. I mean, we're just, all it's saying is we're supporting, you know, the vision. And I'm pretty familiar with the 2050 program, and I don't need more time, so.
I would concur with that, especially, you know, my only concern was that we were committing ourselves to a dollar amount. And it's already been confirmed that we're not committing staff or dollars, or it's a general statement of support. I'm okay with that.
I am comfortable considering that these documents, counsel's, legal counsel's opinion that the documents we've been handed today, if I understand correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, go towards more so the next step in the phase, if we choose to go there, a memorandum of understanding, an MOU. And with regard to the concept itself, I'm pleased. I know a lot of us have been. I was involved in the process and got interviewed and have followed and been a part of this, like I think anyone who asked. And I am comfortable with the concept of supporting it. And I think that's the only issue up tonight. If these other issues were being voted on tonight specifically, I'd quite agree that if those were being voted on, being handed them right now, we would need to delay. But I think what we've been handed is the next step. So I'm comfortable moving forward.
Any other questions for Greg? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Reboot agenda, anything on the consent agenda?
I got a question. D and F are both on the same property. So I was a little bit confused that we're going to dispose of our interest in that property, and then we have an offer to buy. We're not really taking any action. We're just accepting. It's the same address on both of the documents, on both items. Am I the only one that caught that?
I'm sorry, which ones?
The offer to buy.
B and F.
Both relate to 2109.
Let me see, yeah. So that just kind of struck me as, why is somebody offering to buy something that we're gonna dispose of?
I thought the offer to buy was
Are we accepting? Sorry.
I thought we were, one, we were dealing with that property that the bank, and then the other one.
The bank demoed it, but, yeah.
And then the offer to buy was on a different property, wasn't it?
No, it's the same address.
Yeah, same address.
I thought maybe we were setting a public hearing on accepting the offer.
That's what I thought too, but maybe I read it wrong.
I don't know. Don, any? Yeah.
So are they supposed to be the same property?
They're both, they both have the same address.
The offer to buy, you're receiving and filing that offer. You're not taking any action on the documents, though.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I was just confused that we're gonna dispose of the property, but then somebody wants to buy it from us.
That's how we're gonna dispose of it?
Okay.
By selling it.
It just both came in at the same, I mean, I assume it's just a coincidence kind of thing.
We're usually not that fortunate to.
Okay, got it.
It is unusual, yes.
Yeah, okay. Usually we get one, like, and then.
Very good.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
Minor housekeeping action on 4A on the budget resolution. I looked again. It appears to be the same resolution, but for a, for one minor modification. It states that the budget was posted on the city website on February 13th. And in fact, I think it was posted on February 26th. So if we could just tweak the resolution that way, that would make it a little bit.
Does it say on the website, or is that the newspaper posting that we're talking about? There is no requirement to post it on the website.
Or we could just delete that reference to the website from the resolution.
That was the public notice in the newspaper. It's not posted on the website.
Well, I understand. But the resolution does state that it was posted on the website on February 13th.
Maybe just delete that part.
Yeah, so we just delete that.
If that's inaccurate, just delete that part. It's not required for the legal bid anyway, I don't think. And that would make sense, just X it out.
So we make a motion at that time?
Can we?
To delete the words "offer to buy."
To delete the words "on the website"?
Can we refer back to study session, Dick, or do we have to make the motion that...
It should make the motion to clear up the extra resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the public hearings?
Well, I did want to say, you know, we had quite a discussion last time, and I don't want to reopen it. I want to say that there's, I believe, been good resolution of it, you know, with regard to certain positions and whether the council has to approve them for being shifted between departments. I still happen to think that, the mayor disagrees, but, you know, we all have to compromise and we all have to do what's necessary for the city to go forward. We have to have a budget, we have to have these positions. I'm not going to shut the government down over it. The mayor extended out more than halfway that he would provide the information, you know, if this position's being moved, it'll be in the council packet. Let's say I'm moving up, I'll make something up. Reception is from this department to that department. Here would be the fiscal effect, if any, probably won't be much. And I'm doing it because it makes more sense to be here, just so it's public record and we can see it. And that's meeting more than halfway, and I appreciate it, so I'm obligated to meet him, and so I will support it, and so that meets my concerns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other public hearing?
On 4B, Hazel Street wall repair, there is a reference to initial repairs back in 2010. I was just curious, was there something about that particular repair that was defective that caused it to go bad? Or is this just in the category of bad things happen sometimes?
I would say your second one is probably relevant. Not sure exactly, I mean, we put in hundreds of feet of this sheet pile retaining wall, we've only got a section about 20 feet long that, for some reason, is leaning. We've monitored it by survey for about a year, and it has continued to move a little bit. So before something drastic occurs, we chose to address it now. And we think we have a solution for relatively small amount of money, considering the amount of money we spent on it before. We can repair it, stabilize it, and prevent any further damage.
Okay, fair enough, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay. Greg, on 4C, could you remind me on the South First Neighborhood Rehab, what are the general areas that we've already redid the roads in the last few years? And what, where we think we're basically going per the current plan? Or is that a better question than Matt?
Matt may have better information on that. The boundaries were South First to Franklin, Pierce to Palmer, perhaps, top of the hill.
Okay.
And a lot of, the streets have been somewhat strategic in terms of storms who were extensions, you know, starting at the bottom, working up, and also condition, you know, something. We moved things around, Charles was one that we had to accelerate because it just fell apart on us.
Those were pretty old, too, weren't they? I mean, generations, yeah.
I mean, all the streets are 50-plus years old.
Okay.
In terms of future phasing, I don't know if you've got anything to add on that?
In general, I guess we've tried not to disrupt one particular street of the neighborhood in multiple years in a row, so we kind of have bounced around based on priorities, based on immediate needs. It's pretty hard, I don't even think I could explain it to you without looking at a map, I mean, without you having a map in front of you, because it's, you know, a portion of this street, a portion of this street. I'd be happy to send you a map. We do have one that shows all completed phases and kind of a projection of where we want to go. Of course, those have been adjusted in past years, and it may get adjusted again, but I can send that map to the entire council if you guys are interested.
Is that mostly federal grants that come through the state? How is that funded?
No, pretty much, we're paying with sales tax for that project.
Oh, okay.
I think maybe one year we used some geo-bonds in previous years, but our plan for the next several years is to use 100% sales tax, local option sales tax, to pay for those improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it on public hearings? Anything on ordinance for third reading? Anything on the resolutions?
I just had one question, that was on 6G. The, oh, no, it's, hold on a minute. Yeah, I want to know what the farm is.
What is farm number 403?
Yeah.
That's the city attorney, because...
That, essentially, when we rent some farm round out, we have set aside, they sign up for set aside programs and what have you. And so there's just a form that we have to acknowledge as property owner that we're allowing our tenants to sign up for that program.
So the city owns some land that we're renting out? Where's that?
We have little pieces here and there. Some that we still have owned from the, when we picked up a lot of grounds off of town for the spreading sludge. There's, sometimes, I sign off on the airport properties as well, which they show up times from the city's property. Then we've had some, just some acre or two here of surplus right away that has, farmers come in and want to know if they can farm that. Don's got some farm, are being farmed now along 23rd Avenue on the north side. There's some ground that we acquired for park purposes that is farmed. Generally, Bob Atkins or Del Hoos are the people that do the farming.
On 6B, Steve in here? Steve's not in here?
He's not.
Do we know, what is his plan for, you know, when the new people will be on board? How long does it take to train them, when they'll be in the field?
His plan is not to hire the inspectors for a while, but he wanted to start advertising for the technician. He feels that that's the most important position to get in place.
And get trained ready.
There'll be some training involved in it, so...
So he's still looking at a ready date by August, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's not moving up the inspection date, but he wants to move forward with advertising for the technician's position.
Right.
And he's going to start looking for inspectors at some point.
Okay.
But again, the date's August, and we're going to try and work that into the next year's budget. It's not really budgeted for this year, but he wants to get that technician person ready to queue up as soon as possible.
Okay.
I was going to ask the same thing, since the money isn't appropriated and takes effect in July. So that's good to know. And the implementation date remains August? Okay, there is some confusion out in the landlord community, some thought that that had been moved up, so I appreciate that.
At least my knowledge, it has now.
Okay.
Well, I know it takes time to find...
I don't think it could, it was in the...
Right, right.
Yeah, I saw that it was, in one thing, it was, in one newspaper, it was listed as July, but it's August.
And then on, just to comment on C, that's great that it came in 20% lower than estimated. So are we going to add more trees, or what are we going to do? That's all I have.
Anything else on the resolutions? Anything on the applications for permits and cancellations?
Since you're here, is there anything new we need to know lately? I don't know. No, no.
Downtown?
Would you feel like that? I would be curious to hear what really, there's a lot of rumors going on.
Captain Wedeman and I have met with the Hunter block, we have a regular monthly meeting with them, that was last Thursday. We continue to monitor the situation. There was one issue recently down there that we're investigating, and things are progressing. Questions?
If we could have a moment afterwards to talk about that, I was approached by someone actually at church, and very upset. I think they live right across the street, so, the backside, so I'll get with you right afterwards, that won't take long.
We may be talking about two different incidents, but that's fine.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right, it's 3:25.
Wait, before we adjourn, I'm sorry, do we need to talk about DC? Should we stay in so that's public stuff? Is that the right way to do it, Dick? So we can all talk openly? Okay.
Lynne indicated she wanted to go, I went two years ago, I don't need to go this year.
I don't know if we should, like, set, like, together as a group, though, decide kind of what's our, you know, it used to be, under our hand, where two people would go, and it would be like, kind of party, went down the line and tried to take turns. I don't know if we want to keep doing two, if we want to do one, how we want to set it. I think we all should probably just weigh in, and then we know.
If we can save money by sending one, I'm all in favor of that. I've seen enough of DC for a lifetime, so...
Imagine.
I mean, I like the idea of sending two, just because I think it's our chance to do it, but, I mean, if everybody else wants to do one, it doesn't really matter to me.
It's a little different format, and I don't know, you know, the last two or three years, they'd encourage us not to send multiple people, that there really is no more earmark money anymore. And so to send out a big group of people to lobby the legislators was discouraged. But then this year...
Bob's kind of pushing, yeah.
Bob sent out multiple people about going, and so...
As I said, this year, he's trying to get a decent-sized group again, because we do have new legislators, and he was thinking it would be good to go make an appearance. I mean...
Do we have it budgeted for two this year, Marcy?
Yes, it's budgeted.
And I had asked the question at the meeting at the chamber, I mean, do we even need to send anybody, because no earmarks? And I think Greg answered my question, said that, you know, that's really looked upon favorably if there are at least one or two elected officials there. And you're going, Matt, as well? So I, I don't, I don't care one way or the other. I was going to not go if it didn't make any difference, if none of us went, just to save money, just have nobody go, but...
But I agree with your assessment. Value, and if the people going attend all the meetings and they're there for the city, and they go to everything, I don't have a problem with that. I don't want it to be used as a vacation time or anything like that, so...
Right, right, and there's only one day, one day of meetings.
Yeah, it's a quick issue.
Yeah, it's very quick.
As the person who does a lot of the talking, it's, I think it adds to my credibility to have my bosses, elected officials, you know, there. And I think it shows commitment by the community and our priorities and issues, so I think it's very beneficial.
I also think it's important our branch had that firsthand, so that as we make decisions on how to allocate money, I, you know, I think it's good. If we budgeted two, and this year is a year where we think it would be advantageous, I say we stick with two. And again, I think Lynn is, I'm more than happy to, I guess, say that I think you should be one of them, and since you volunteered to do this and you haven't done it in quite a while.
I think it's been about seven years.
Yeah, and I did it just, we just did it two years ago.
Two years ago, okay. When was the last time? When was the last time?
From an economic standpoint, I think at one time, the number was 65 million in project funding that we'd received.
Yeah.
Again, the process has changed over the last three or four years, so...
Yeah.
I didn't know Bob's not here, I thought maybe he'd be here, because he was the one that approached us originally about wanting to get people to go again.
Well, it sounds like it's really more of a condensed, not, I mean, granted, I haven't been for about seven years, but there were people from Health and Human Services, education, et cetera, et cetera, and it seems like those kind of entities are not going. It's focused primarily on transportation, where'd you go? Transportation and infrastructure and that sort of thing. And it's, they've really got it condensed into one solid day of meetings, so...
That's what we did, and I think the only addition our year was, there was some to do with education in the local college. That was a big issue that year. I'm not sure if it is this year or not.
So that would mean that the individuals could go out the night before, then catch the 7 o'clock or 7:30 flight back the evening of the conference?
It'd be the next morning, because they're doing a dinner thing. Yeah, so it's two nights, you know, hotels, not...
It's 500 more dollars?
Forty-eight hours, yeah, so...
I think they have a block of rooms, and they do discount.
Yeah.
I have to recall that it was 500 dollars.
About 3:25.
It's not cheap.
I'm fine with it to continue sending two people. I think it reflects well on our city that we are committed in with the new legislators. I think it's a good idea.
And to the extent folks go early, I know we did. Two years ago, every penny came out of each of our pocket to go early, to have a day of actually being able to see things. But we paid for that completely, as it should be.
Right.
I agree that, yes.
Anything else? All right. 3:30, I'll run a quick meeting. So it'd be 15 dollars times 295 units. That's probably not exactly right, but whatever the multifamily housing fee schedule is...
And they're asking for a waiver, I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of the question.
Do you have a waiver now?
We're asking for a waiver.
But do you have a waiver now? Are you guys already paying the registration?
We are, and we have been since about 2007. I've been doing the votes, I started doing the votes in 2002, 2003, 2004. Then I went back, I did the votes in 2007, and I've never found where we've ever paid this before. I came back in 2009 as a manager, and now I'm finding and have been since 2009 been paying this. And I'm not sure why. If you look at chapter, which you wouldn't, I have to look at, but in Iowa Code 403.8.10, I think that's actually pretty specific that we are exempt.
We looked into that, though, that definitely came up through the process, that Iowa code, and it was determined that that wasn't what...
Yeah, that was my understanding, that that doesn't require us to exempt. That's my memory.
403.8.10.
Are you going to look for a sticker and see? Okay.
So if you don't have any other questions, think about it and let me know. If they got questions, they can get ahold of you.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on for nothing. Now you're good.
Sorry.